For tonight's Elsigen planning commission meeting. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everyone. Is Venus with us, or are you going to do roll call for us?
I will do the roll call. Yeah, Venus is she's not ill, so I'll take over her spot as well. So with that, Commissioner Kellworth.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Heschler is absent. Commissioner Wingate?
Here.
Vice Chair Newman?
She is present.
And Chair Baldino?
Yes, present. All right, thank you, Eduardo. Now on the agenda is the time for public communication. If you are here to talk about something that's on the agenda, then you'll have the opportunity to speak to us during those agenda items. So this is just a general public communication. If anyone else has any other comments to make for the planning commission, now would be the time. Eduardo, are you in city hall chambers, or are those closed due to COVID?
No, the chambers are also closed.
Okay, okay, so I'll ask anyone in the Zoom who wants to make a public comment, you can either raise your hand, or. Okay.
Oh, wait, someone.
Okay, Johnny Mac.
Let me go ahead and unmute.
Yeah.
He's muted.
Yeah, I'm asking him to unmute.
Hi, we're just here to speak on the variance for 404 East Maple Avenue.
Okay, you'll have an opportunity for that.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you for coming. All right, any other public communications for items that are not on the agenda? Seeing no one raise their hands, I will close public communication. Next item on our agenda is consent counter. We have no items for that. So that'll bring us to agenda item G. Are there any written communications relating to tonight's agenda that we haven't seen?
No.
No, okay. All right, that brings us to first item on our agenda. H1 is new business. We're talking about EA 1207, a tentative map extension for location of a property at 222, I'm sorry, 224 Whiting Street. And is there a staff report for this?
Yeah, I'll just make it real brief. Per the subject of the map act and the municipal code, applicants are allowed to request for a one-year extension to a map. This particular map was approved several years ago. That initial approval was granted an initial two-year approval. Last year, it was set to expire. They, it came before you as a request for an extension, and it got extended to this December. And so they are requesting another one-year extension in accordance with our municipal code and state law. And so therefore, we do recommend that the planning commission approve another one-year extension to the map.
Okay, Eduardo, there are no changes to the plan at all, correct?
That's correct, yes.
It's just a request for another one-year extension?
Correct.
And they're allowed up to five years of extensions?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the second request?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions for staff on this item? Okay, I'll open up this agenda item for public communication. If there's anyone who wishes to address the commission, wave or let me know, and we'll happy to hear you. Okay, go ahead, just tell us your name and where you live.
My name, so I'm Stacy Strauss from Soror and Associates. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Our office is in Hermosa Beach, but we work often with applicants from your city and wanted to thank you, the commissioners, for your time tonight. And for the staff, it's an unusual time during the pandemic, and the staff has been very flexible and amiable and relatable and accessible during this unusual time, and it's very appreciated. We have a simple request for you tonight to extend a tentative map, but just not able to get that map recorded during the time that is required. Some unforeseen circumstances mostly related to the pandemic.
Understood.
Available if you have any questions.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Strauss. Any questions for Ms. Strauss, representing the applicant?
Just a quick question, I do, quick question would just be, you think that whatever the delays at this year, assuming that next year things will come back to be a little more normal, should that, you should be able to fulfill that obligation by next year? Complete the project?
Expect so. So I do expect so. The applicant is committed to completing the project, and I think the pandemic has been a tremendous impact. I've had a very brief conversation with Sam. I don't know if you recall the conversation, and I know with Greg, prior to his departure from the city, about the city considering separating approvals of projects from approvals of tentative maps. And those are very different things, and I think the conversation should probably continue when the city is ready to consider something like that. Those are, you know, they're very different things, and we could have processed this map through the proper channels. But the problem is because we can't complete certain functions of the map when construction hasn't been completed, those two have to, based on the structure of this, those two things have to continue. They're reliant on each other to continue. So it's probably a larger discussion that we could have by, if we could have two separate resolutions, one approving condominium use, a use permit, and a design, and then another of the tentative map. And that way, those two are not married and can proceed separately. And then, of course, a certificate of occupancy could be conditioned upon completion of the subdivision process. I gave you a lot of information, and I promised to follow up with staff. Uh huh, so Eduardo and Sam, maybe we can talk in a future, in future time about this.
Thank you for that. That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, anyone else wishing to make public comment on this agenda item? All right, seeing no one wave, I will close public communication. All further comments shall come from the dais. Any comments tonight?
COVID has messed up a lot of things, so this is just sort of normal right now.
Yeah, I agree. And as I pointed out, there are no changes substantially to this map. It's just a request for an extension with their well and their rights, and they applied timely for it. So I see no reason to deny approval of the request. If there aren't any more comments, I'm happy to accept a motion on this item.
I will move to adopt, I'll move to adopt resolution 2890, approving the requested time extension.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, and we'll do a roll call vote, Eduardo, if you please.
Good thing. Commissioner Kellworth?
Aye.
Commissioner Wingate?
Aye.
Vice Chair Newman?
Yes.
Chair Baldino?
Aye, passives four zero. All right, thank you, everyone. Next, we have a continued item. We're conducting a public hearing on item number EA 1270, a variance number VAR 1901, for an accessory dwelling unit located at 404 East Maple Avenue. And can we have a staff report on this item, please?
Sure, can. I will, give me a few moments here. I'm going to share my screen so I can show you the PowerPoint. Okay, I'm assuming everyone can see the.
Yes.
PowerPoint now? Okay, perfect. So the item before you is a request for variance at 404 East Maple. The property in question, subject property measures just over 5,100 square feet in area. You can see it is developed with a one-story residence that currently maintains a 10-foot front yard setback and also has a detached garage on the west side of the property. The applicant proposes to demolish that existing garage that you saw there, and constructed a new two-story structure, which is comprised of a garage on the first story with an entrance to an ADU that would be located atop the detached garage or the detached structure. So as indicated, the structure would remain detached. It would just be two-story. Again, ADU on top, garage on the bottom. The applicant, in order to do this, is requesting a variance, and primarily because of the front yard setback, which is here, they are proposing a 10-foot setback, whereas the municipal code or zoning code requires a 22-foot front yard setback requirement. So it, and would pretty much be in line with the existing residence that's currently at the structure on the property and would remain. So in order to deviate from the municipal code or the zoning code, you know, applicants apply for variance, and the planning commission, and so reviewing a variance request, request to deviate from the code, must make these findings here. I didn't want to put all the wording, so I kind of summarized it, but in essence, then you need to show that there's, you know, an exceptional or extraordinary circumstance. It's necessary for enjoyment and preservation of a substantial property right. Variants will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare, and it will not adversely affect the general plan. Now, staff believes that all four findings can be made in that it will not adversely affect the general plan, will still maintain a residential character, will not be detrimental, as it will, you know, maintain the existing setbacks that are currently on the property. And it is, we believe, is necessary to preserve the buildability of the lot in our exceptional circumstances. On that point, though, I just want to cover a little bit with regards to the exceptionality, if you will. When we looked at this property and looking at the entire, and this is a snapshot of the zoning of the residential zone within the city. So we looked at the entire R1 zone, and we kind of scanned the zone, and as you can, you'll see throughout these properties, you see traditional lots with, you know, your typical narrow width with the deep lots, because, you know, the narrower part, you know, abuts the, the, the street. And then we look at it in context with the subject property, which I've circled here. And it's unique in that the subject property is really the only interior lot in the zone that's oriented with its long side facing the street, as you could see here. You know, again, what you typically find in our R1 zone are these types of lots. Deep lots, narrow width, which is kind of your traditional. But here, at least for the subject property here, you have, it's, you know, it's almost twisted 90 degrees, where you have the longer portion deemed to be the front, and the lot depth is, which is 45 feet, is, you know, is very much the narrow part of the lot. So on the point regarding preservation of a substantial property right, you know, if we look at the subject property, which, you know, indicates, measures 5,100 square feet, if it were oriented traditionally, where you have, you know, the street frontage being the narrow part, and in this situation, it's a 45 by 114-foot deep lot. We looked at the buildability of it. So when you factor out the setbacks, the 22-foot, 22-foot front setback and the side setback of 10% of the lot width and the five-foot setback of the rear, traditionally, you have a lot that has a buildable area of about, you know, just over 3,100 square feet, which equates to about 61% of the lot. So now we looked at it, the buildability, if you will, with respect to this particular lot in question, which is oriented with the street frontage again, being the longer of that rectangle. And you have, that creates really a smaller buildable area. Again, taking into account the 22-foot front setback here, the six-foot setbacks on the side, and the five-foot rear setback, results in a buildable area of just over 1,800 square feet, which is equivalent to about 35% of the lot. And comparatively, you know, the buildable area on this particular lot, if you look at it compared to a traditional lot, it's only slightly more than half of the buildable area that you would have on a traditional lot. So, you know, looking at that, it is really being a unique situation, and we believe is an exceptional circumstance that would warrant approval of a variance. So with that, we do recommend that the planning commission adopt the resolution and thereby approving the EA and the variance for the requested project.
Thank you, Eduardo. How is this lot different from any other corner lot in the city that has one side on the front, and then the side yard is also on a road?
Well, it's still different because the, even though it's narrower and it has street frontage along the side, the front is still considered to be the narrower portion of the lot. So with that being stated, it still falls under this category, a corner lot, still falls under this category here.
So if I had a corner lot, like the one on the left, on the left-hand side, you know, instead of a three-foot front yard fence, I could have a six-foot side yard fence along that wall, right?
Along this side, correct. So assuming this is the street, yes.
So the city treats lots on the corner like they weren't on a corner, basically?
Correct. There are a couple, you know, other regulations when it comes to visibility for a driveway, if the driveway is over here, or in the corner lot, the corner portion, where, you know, lots, those lots have to have, and any, any walls or landscaping are limited to 30 inches. But aside from that, I mean, that really doesn't cut into the buildability of that lot on a corner lot, like it does with this situation on the subject property in question.
Okay, and the square footage, the proposed ADU is how much again? I tried to find it in the report and I couldn't.
Right, so the, it is 801 square feet in total?
And when you add the existing house, the total square footage after this is built is going to be what?
It'll be approximately 2,200 square feet.
Okay, and that's within the FIR for the R1 zone?
Correct, yes.
All right, any other questions for staff on the presentation we received?
Who owns the driveway?
So the driveway is a separate property. Let me go back to the aerial here. It is a separate property. It's owned by the, by this neighbor to the rear at 326 Maple.
And.
There are, sorry, yeah, there's access easements that allow for utilizing that strip for access, vehicular access.
All right, so there is an easement for that?
Correct.
Okay, what about the tandem parking in front of the garage? Is that going to impact the FAR?
No, it will not.
And does that belong to the tenant, or does it belong to the house?
The applicant could probably speak better to that if you want some of that information, but at least from the city's perspective, it would, you know, we don't regulate who it belongs to.
Okay, so there's no problem with that parking being right there. That's not considered infringing on the lot? So that's not infringing on the 12-foot, on the 10-foot setback or the 12-foot setback?
Well, yeah, it would be within the 10-foot setback, but, you know, there's no regulation that would prohibit that.
Okay, all right, that was my question. Thank you.
Eduardo, can you go back to the other slide that has the setbacks?
This one?
Yes, or does that say, sorry, I keep trying to make it bigger, but I realize I'm not controlling the screen. Is that a four-foot setback? I can't tell if it's a four or six-foot setback on the.
Four on the rear?
Oh, on the rear, it is four, yes.
And that is, well, I guess it's what is on the existing house as well then, right? Or is it?
It is.
Further?
You know, it is, and our regulations do allow for ADUs to maintain a four-foot setback.
Okay, that is my question. And then is that how, is, I think it's 326, is that a double lot? Because it looks like on the zoning map, there's three single R1 lots there. Or is it this, is there, I can't tell, if there's one lot, one lot further south than 326?
Yes, there is one additional, yes, there is one lot additional, additional lot to the south.
Okay.
Yeah, but it doesn't take access off of Maple.
Okay, that's my other question.
Is there, is there anything on that lot behind 326?
Yeah, this is a little dated in terms of the aerial, but yes, there was a new house that was approved and built on that property.
And but it does not have access from Maple, is that correct?
326 does? It's the lot, the lot south of that does not have access on Maple.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so that's a flag lot. These two are, 326 is the flag lot, and 404 is the one in front.
Yeah, but I'm asking about the lot behind 326.
Oh, 326?
Behind, behind 326. You said there was a third lot.
Yes, and that's the one that takes, does not take access off of, from Maple.
It's a flag lot, but is it a flag lot from Maple, or is it a flag lot from, was that Oak?
Yeah, it would be a flag lot off Oak, and it's actually technically in a different zoning designation as well.
Okay, all right. I'm just wondering about the, how busy that driveway is going to be. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for staff?
Nothing, no commentary from the owners of 326? No concerns that they expressed to staff in the process?
No, we did not receive any responses or comments in reaction to our noticing.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions or comments? Not hearing any. I will now open public communication on this agenda item. Anyone wishing to address the commission, please just give me a wave. Okay, Mr. Verlara? Sir, go ahead. You have to be unmuted.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you for your time here. I'm the applicant for this project, and I just wanted to address the notion of that additional tandem off-street parking there. One of the kind of individual characteristics of Maple Street, for those few blocks there, you could only park on one side of the street. So getting those additional park, having an adequate two-car garage below, and the opportunity for those two additional off-street parking spaces are very valuable to my clients and the property owners there, because as you guys probably know, that's, there's only parking on one side of that street, so it comes at a premium. And, you know, I'm going to, my clients here, the property owners are here, and I'm sure they want to speak next and kind of bring a personal touch to you and then the whole reason for this variance proposal, and I'll just let them speak.
All right, thank you, Mr. Verlara. Is the applicant here? Okay, just tell us, we have to unmute you first. We can't hear you yet. Hold on.
Hi, I'm Sue Whitey, the owner at 404, and I appreciate the council's consideration of approval of this project. And also, I wanted to add, I'm also a marriage and family therapist, and I, one of the rooms may be used for an office, and that my office has been closed. So, and I'm still working, and so I appreciate the opportunity to have more space in the future.
Oh, I thought you were going to offer this group some free therapy for a second. I was.
Well.
Going to happily take it.
It's probably financial, no doubt. Budgetary.
How long can the meeting go for?
All right, anyone else wishing to make comment? Mr. Verlara, I think you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to point out one more thing here. You know, Susan. Yeah, me, I just wanted to point out one more thing here. You know, Susan, she's she lives with her her daughter's, her son-in-law and her grandchildren there. And it's, you know, the ADU is meant for her, and I mean, it's probably one of the more purest intentions of the ADU to keep to keep the family on the property there, because they're kind of outgrowing that little main dwelling unit. So it's one of the more pure intentions of the ADU use used, I believe.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else with any comments on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public communication and all further comments shall come from the dais. Who wants to go first, anyone?
It looks like a really nice, the the thing that struck me about the design element is that it doesn't, it looks like it's going to blend in with the existing house. It's not going to be other than a cantilever over. It's not really going to be protruding or an unattractive addition, and I think that was very thoughtful, so. I personally have no qualms with it, and I think it meets the criteria for the city.
Yeah, I'm I'm pleased that you're adding sufficient parking for for cars, because I know that is a very crowded crowded street, and as Brenda said, it it won, the new ADU will echo the existing house. And there's not much you can do with that lot, because it's long and skinny.
We thank God for Mike, he figured it out, so.
Yeah, I think my initial concerns were whether this starts a precedent. But based on Eduardo, what we're looking at on the zoning map, this, am I correct, and this would literally be the only lot that we see in the R1 zone that it applies to?
Yeah, yeah, it it seems that that it's the only lot, correct, in the situation.
Like you, Michelle, I was really carefully looking at that when Eduardo had that up there. I just couldn't find another lot that was linear like that one is. So that's that that too was a thought.
Yeah, I drove by the site today to take a look at it, and there's not a lot of room on that lot, but I I do find that because this proposed setback will fall in line with the existing house, it won't actually be a visual anomaly on that street. And like Commissioner Wingate said, I appreciate any property owner who's willing to put more parking on their lot, because that is a hot commodity in our town, especially as we add ADUs throughout the R1. So I do appreciate that. So although I would be normally hesitant about any type of front yard setback for an ADU, as this one unfolds, it seems to make sense, and it seems to give the property owners the rights they're entitled to to develop their property without being detrimental to the rest of the city. So I think I'm in favor of the variance. Any other comments from the planning commissioners? Okay, if not, then I'll accept a motion on this item.
I'll move EA one two seven zero, variance number VAR one nine dash zero one for an accessory dwelling unit, to approve that variance.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, and now we'll have a roll call vote, please, Eduardo.
Okay, Commissioner Keldor?
Aye.
Commissioner Wingate?
Aye.
Vice Chair Newman?
Aye.
Chair Baldino?
Aye, and it passes. Thank you all, everyone.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Yay, we're going to have more room.
Okay, next on the agenda is item J, which is a report from the Director of Development Services. I like the new title, Sam.
Good, good evening, commissioners. So I wanted to, I wanted to introduce a new planning consultant, Dennis Cook. You can see him on the side. He comes, he comes to us with years of experience. He has fifteen years of experience as a community development director in city of Yuba City up north. Most recently, after retiring from Yuba City, he's he's worked as a consultant, planning consultant, like he's doing with us for the past fifteen years, and he's he's worked on both sides. He's worked for private development teams to do subdivisions and other planning projects. And so we're delighted to have him, and he'll be taking on many of the roles and projects that Greg McLean was working on. So Eduardo's been, he's been pop-popular. He's been extremely busy, and so we're glad to have Dennis help us and 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 we hope to get some more help in the future, but wanted to please say hello to Mr. Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome there, Mr. Cook.
Proud to be here.
We're happy to have you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Yeah, certainly.
And maybe one more thing, as you mentioned, the Development Services Department, we've taken on a new name. But in addition to taking on a new name, we've taken on a housing division. And as part of that, Eduardo is 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 taking on the senior housing board meeting, and so we're doing that once a month on top of the planning commission meetings, so. It's it's an additional role that our department's been taking on, so that's it for this evening.
What, is there anything else added under your umbrella as? What's it? Development services?
What do you mean umbrella, as far as staffing-wise or?
Well, you're doing the housing, you're doing the senior housing board too?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anything else like that that you normally weren't doing before the reorg?
No, no, that's it. That's it. You know, the senior housing board was under the recreation park.
Yeah.
And so when, as you may know, the recreation park and library combined create community services. And so as part of that, parts of recreation park were split up. The the housing, senior housing came to us. Some of the park maintenance went to Public Works, and then the the biggest part went to went to the library. So it's just, you know, all three of us are, you know, getting used to this. We're in three months into this and and I have to compliment Eduardo, who's who's really taken on a big role, and I really appreciate his efforts.
We appreciate you, Eduardo.
Yes, indeed.
Sam, let me ask, is there a separate low-income housing department or individual, or how is that going to work into the fold of what you guys do?
Yeah, so if you recall, last year, we received five point three million dollars from the the Waypoint project. And so, you know, from then, a lot has happened, and one of the things that's happened is that state HCD has is is pushing on a Vena number, Regional Housing Needs Assessment Number, that is about seven, almost eight times more than what we're used to, or what we got over the last ten years. So we really need to develop a strategy to to do more housing. And so we we are going out right now to 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 partner with a affordable housing service provider. That RFQ went out, we received many applications for it. We're reviewing that process right now. And we we hope to have a partner with the city to help us with with that mandate from the state.
Okay.
More to come.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Sam. Okay, now moving on to other business, agenda item K. We have an update on the accessory dwelling units. Well, hey, David.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, David.
Eduardo, I saw you sent us some additional information.
Yes, I did. I I kind of broke up the 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 table that was presented at the last meeting, and I saw the the fault there. And so just to just to be clear, so we we've had a total of seventy applications that have come in thus far since twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and of those seventy, forty-three of them have actually obtained permits to to build the their ADUs. And I went ahead and further clarified in terms of which ones of those were either brand-new construction or conversions of existing. And so as you see in the in the table, if 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 we really focus on the on the actual permits that have been issued, again, forty-three have been issued, and of the and and of those forty-three, thirty-three of those have been new construction ground up, while while ten of those have been actual conversions of existing structures.
Great. So I sent an inquiry to to Sam and Eduardo today, asking about whether or not the city has undertaken a study to see what the impact on sewer and water lines are of adding ADUs. And I didn't get a chance to read your response before jumping on the meeting, so can you just summarize?
Yeah, that's fine. So Eduardo and I reached out to Public Works, and it's been a while, but it was maybe three, four years ago when this ADU issue first came on board. There are a lot of new faces now at Public Works, but I remember having the conversation, you know, could we make an argument that there are parts of the city where we don't have the capacity, either the water or the sewer, to to say that ADU is is not able to be built. I remember having conversations to the fact, I don't know that if there's anything in writing, but that Public Works felt that that was going to be really difficult to to make an argument for, and and you can see where many other cities throughout the state would try to make the same argument, and we were thinking at the time that some cities like, you know, I'll just point out a city like Rolling Hills where there is there isn't even sewer in throughout the city, and some, a city like that could possibly make an argument for for that case. But anyway, we proceeded to, you know, to to move down the path that we did with AD, allowing ADUs throughout the city. And Chairman Chairman Baldino asked a question. We we spoke to Public Works. The answer to that question was, they said that no such study was done. Okay, so that study was not done. What they did say is that they could take a look at the seventy-some odd ADU units, probably less than that, because it's probably you know, the ADUs that were that have been built in the last two, three years. What they said that they can do a study of what the water capacity has been before and after the ADU had gone in, to get some idea as to how much of an impact an ADU has on 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 such a pipeline. Now, you know, that is one study. I don't know if it's going to answer the question, or really what question we're trying to answer. But that's what they said, and if you'd like to discuss this further, we can invite the Public Works team in a future meeting.
Yeah, my concern and the reason I asked is that before we continue to grant applications over the counter, which we must do, I would like to know at least the city has investigated the impacts on our water and sewer infrastructure. Worst-case scenario, the R1 turns into an R2, and there's two families in every lot. Can our water and sewer handle twice the capacity it has right now, ten years, twenty years from now? And if we don't know, I think it's a valid question we need to be asking as we move forward. So I mean, if they want to look at the permits pulled, I don't know if comparing piecemeal seventy units is going to give us the overview that I'm kind of looking for to answer this question. But I think it's a good conversation we should have, whatever form it takes. So if that means inviting the folks from Public Works in to have that conversation, then I'm all for that.
We will agendaize an item for a future meeting.
Yeah, it seems to me that, you know, in the capital works projects, there are line items to replace water and sewer lines. As I recall, looking at that list, so there, I would assume there must be some areas of the city where the infrastructure may be a little older, a little weaker, and perhaps looking at those areas to see if adding more capacity would not be the wisest thing until those capital improvement projects were undertaken.
Or another way to look at it is taking a look at the existing capacity of those lines and saying those cap, those lines cannot take on anymore. As such, maybe in parts of the city, we shouldn't allow any. Right, that's a different way to look at it, but those are difficult questions that that I don't have the expertise in, and we can certainly agendaize an item for Public Works folks to come and answer those questions.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Sam. Okay, next item is discussion about canceling our next meeting on Christmas Eve. Any
I make a motion we cancel our our meeting on Christmas Eve.
My second.
Okay, I I have no objection. Michelle, you don't want to see me on Christmas Eve, no?
I mean, I'm here, you're welcome.
That's right, we're not going anywhere, guys. It's a good recommendation by staff.
I'll have a drive-by eggnog waiting for you.
That's right, that's right. So I I think there's consensus to go ahead and cancel that meeting and take up any business we have to in the new year. Okay, next, a report from our city attorney. We have a brief summary of the new housing legislation recently signed into law.
Yes, good evening, everyone. David King here. It's good to see you all again. I'm sorry I wasn't able to join you for the past couple of months. I was teaching a class, a Loyola night class at six o'clock on Thursdays, so that's why I wasn't able to join your prior meetings, but the school year is over, so now I can come back for a few, a few meetings, so I'm glad to be here. It's my understanding that Commissioner Keldor asked for this brief presentation. Eduardo was kind enough to send you a document. It's a four-page document with a list of bills. I'm happy to give a quick overview of some of them, but if you have any specific questions about any of them, happy to answer those as well. Very briefly, housing continues to be an issue throughout the state. My general impression from doing some quick research about this is that the legislature had a lot of really lofty goals to further increase affordable housing and just housing in general statewide. But my impression is from reading several articles is that for the most part, a lot of people consider this past legislative session to be a disappointment. As far as housing, a lot of the bills that are in this document are make a lot of technical changes, very small, you know, advances for those who are in favor of affording affordable housing. Nothing, no earth-shattering, nothing really revolutionary in this in this document. I'm not aware of any bills that are really going to make tremendous strides when it comes to housing. So from the city's perspective, the density bonus, AB two, three, four, five, that's on the first page. That basically, the city does not have a density bonus ordinance, but if someone came and and needed with a project that qualified, I think we would have to give some sort of concessions. The way density bonus works generally is if your project has a certain amount of affordable units, then you get to increase the density of that project. And basically, that bill just lowers the thresholds to make it even easier for developers to gain those concessions. So my understanding is from Eduardo is that that they are working, staff is working on an ordinance that will be brought to the commission at some point in the near future. But in general, state law is making it easier for developers to qualify for those concessions. And that's AB two, three, four, five. They're very minor changes to ADU law, really nothing, nothing earth-shattering from the city's perspective. There's a really intriguing bill on page two of the handout, AB eighteen fifty-one. This is titled the Yes in God's Backyard Bill. Basically makes it easier for a, I'm quoting here, a religious institution affiliated housing development project. So I suppose the idea is that the church or the religious institution builds its own housing in the back of its property and and some sort of parking lot, that cities would have to approve that if it takes up up to something like fifty percent of the parking. The city can require additional parking spaces per each unit that's built. But the city has would have to approve it if even even if it was taking certain required parking spaces to do that housing project. So that's sort of an intriguing solution to the state's housing issue. And there's also an interesting, you know, while we're talking about ADU uh, issue, and there's also a interesting, you know, while we're talking about ADUs, HOAs used to be able to prevent, um, you know, how they, HOAs have certain rules for community interest development, um, common interest development, excuse me, um, where they could restrict the number of rentals. And so there was a question as to whether ADUs would qualify as a rental um, under those HOA rules, and so basically the legislature took ADUs out of that equation. So now my understanding is an HOA can restrict, um, a certain amount of rentals, I think it's twenty-five percent. But ADUs are parti- are are taken out of that equation. Um, so they don't count towards that twenty-five percent that's allowed, so in other words, uh, people who are renting their ADUs can rent, rent as many as they want. Um, and that wouldn't, that wouldn't trigger the, the HOA's rules as far as the limit on the number of rentals.
How to, how does a condominium become an ADU?
Oh, condo can, uh, you can also, maybe you, uh, change a room into, uh, ADU, or, um, maybe if you have a, if you have an exterior unit, or or sex, exterior entrance, maybe, um, uh, then you could maybe convert a back room into an ADU.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And I'm just flipping through this to see if there's anything noteworthy, um. Uh, yeah, again, very minor changes, nothing earth-shattering, but happy to answer questions if any, if the commission has any questions about any of the bills.
I have a question about the density bonus and how an El Segundo housing ordinance would come into play. Well, can the local jurisdiction be, uh, more restrictive than the state density bonus, so could El Segundo say well, now state law, you can go up from thirty-five to fifty percent, but in El Segundo, it's still capped at thirty-five?
Yeah, no, we would not be able to do that, so if if the state law increased it to fifty, fifty percent, we would have to abide by that. Cities could go beyond that, but they can't be more restrictive.
And so if we were going to invest time and put it together, that sort of an ordinance, what things would we be able to control or dictate, I guess, what is the benefit to using staff resources to do something like that if the state ordinance already exists?
Well, interestingly, the state, um, the state law actually requires the city, my understanding is the city, the state law requires the city to pass an ordinance. So I think that's something that we've needed to do for a long time. Eduardo, you know, Sam, feel free to chime in, but my understanding is that HCD has dinged the city in the past for not doing that. And that's something, again, my understanding is that the city has committed to doing that.
It was, uh, it was part of the, the la- last housing element. It was something that, uh, the, the city committed to do and, and, um, and and we're gonna do before, um, before the next housing element.
But Commissioner Keldorff, I think to your question, um, we can control some of the concessions and some of the benefits that we give. So there's a range of different concessions and benefits, and so, uh, you know, my understanding is it's kind of like a, a shopping list, if you will, and we might have some control over that.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. King, nice to see you again, what was the class you were teaching?
Uh, ethical lawyer and professional responsibility.
Ah, look at you. Thank you, Mr. King, okay, next is planning commissioner comments, any comments?
Everybody have a very happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year, and let's hope that twenty twenty-one is better than twenty twenty.
Thank you, Carol. Um, I, um, I've been receiving a lot of emails from Venus from residents concerned about the Kansas project. And I wanted to respond to those with a link to the prior agenda packet. But when I went on the city's website, I only see agendas for future meetings, and I can't find where the old agenda items are archived. So I don't know if that's just me or the website, but if staff could send me the, uh, Kansas Environmental Impact Report, the staff report, because, um, I, it's great to get emails from people in town with questions, but someone's got to respond, right? I mean, a lot of the issues that people are coming to public comments on that we have not yet been able to respond to are based on misinformation. Um, so if someone could just send me an email, uh, I did receive, someone sent a flyer, uh, from a resident that had a bunch of bullet points of, you know, issues and concerns. And so I would like to have that resource, like I can reach out to that individual and have a conversation with them and address any concerns they have. Uh, but overall, the, um, the new website layout, I just, I don't know where those archived agenda packets are or meeting minutes, it, if you clip on Planning Commission, again, it's only future-looking, so if someone can direct me that to that at some point, that'd be great. Uh, I think all that stuff should be readily available for anyone looking for any type of past history for the Planning Commission, or, you know, city council for that matter.
It's a little tricky, but there is a button that, that you have access to all the past ones, but, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll provide a link.
Okay, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, right, that's a good, uh, that's a good point, I've had a similar thought, is that we're getting these comments, but because we haven't had that discussion, it is hard to know, you know, what and how to respond. We're happy to take any suggestive, um, feedback from staff or legal from.
My, my thought was to simply say thank you for the comments, attach there's a link with the staff report, environmental impact, you know, give them the information that we have been presented so that they can review it themselves and and form their own opinions. You know, I'm just pushing forward public documents that hadn't been prepared by me, but it's what we're going to decide this issue on, so. Those should be readily available for anyone who's on the city website searching, you know, Griffin Capital Kansas Project, it should be popping up, but if I can't see it, you know, I'm sure other people are having that same problem. And another thing was, I was contacted by someone regarding this, uh, via LinkedIn. And they did receive a notice from the city about, you know, a paper flyer saying, hey, this development is happening. And here's the website for the city, but they couldn't figure out from that website how to get to the information about the project. So, great that the city is giving notice to people living around these projects, but that notice should be specific on, here is a link to the information you need about what's going on, as opposed to just general, you know, elsegundo.org or whatever it was. All right, so.
And I'll, I'll just add, um, real quick, uh, Mr. Chair, um, uh, obviously you don't want to state a position on a project that's coming up. And if you do receive information, I think the chair's advice is fantastic, just acknowledge it and thank them for it and receive it. Um, of course, if you have a dialogue about someone, even if you're not committing to a position, if you were to gain information that isn't in the public record, that's when you would have to do an ex parte um, uh, notification at the beginning of the hearing. If there's something in the public record that you've, you've talked to someone about, you don't have to disclose that you had a conversation because you're having conversations with multiple people. It's only if that, if that conversation gives you information that you don't already have and that you're relying on in making your decision, that's something that the developer or the applicant has a right to respond to. Um, unless you disclose that, and it's not in the public record, they would never know that you have something in your head that you're making your decision based on.
No, that's a great distinction, David, but I, I feel like my role in this situation is more pushing out information to people as opposed to gaining information, because they're asking questions. And I know there's been a ton of work on this project, and there's a ton of information, I just want to have a link I can shoot out to people when they respond, just saying thank you for your input, you can find more information here. And when the meeting is scheduled, we'll let you know so you can participate. You know, something simple like that, I just, I want people who engage to be responded to and and be informed.
Absolutely, yeah, my impression from Commissioner Keldorff was that, um, she was in her, engaging in a dialogue. I guess my only concern is that if you were to push out information, are people then going to go back to you and say, well, what is your, what's your, what's your take on this, what are you thinking? Um, and that's where, that's where my advice would, would trigger, you come in.
Good point. All right, any other comments? Happy holidays, everyone, it's nice to see you all, thank you for joining us, Mr. Cook. And, um, since the adjournment, do we know when our next meeting is, in January? Does anyone have that date? The second Thursday?
It's the fourteenth.
The fourteenth or the seventh?
Fourteenth, uh-huh. The second Thursday is a fourteen.
Fourteen.
All right, teamwork, all right, guys. Good to see everyone, the meeting is adjourned, our next meeting will be January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, take care, everybody.
Good night.
Good job, everybody.
Happy New Year to everyone.